Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to the Russell County Commission Meeting for Wednesday, November 12, 2025. We have a packed house today, and that's great. And I know we've got some good stuff that we're gonna work on. Um, we're gonna get started by calling the meeting to order. We're gonna have an invocation by Reverend Grant Parker, Pastor Emeritus of Epworth Methodist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we're gonna ask Chief Deputy William Alexander to lead us in the pledge. If you will, please rise or remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Oh God, you've been our help in ages past, and you are a hope for years to come. God, you made it clear in your word through your servant Paul that he wrote to the Roman church, that all authorities, all authorities, are allowed to be in the position they're in by you for reason and a purpose. And God, I pray for courage for these, this, this commission as they vote, as they consider things. Lord, that they would have the courage to vote, to discern what is the will of God rather than the will of the people. Because I know, Lord, it's by your will that they are in place. And our responsibility is to follow there, that, follow the directives and directions given, given to us through them by you. So God bless and guide and direct this, this commission as they go about doing your work. They would always be solidly in the center of your will, your way, and most importantly, your word. In Jesus' name, we pray and we praise you. Amen and amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Um, if you're following along with our agenda, you know that neither one of those names are on the agenda, but um, we're so proud. We, we had, we had to switch to the A-Team today, and I appreciate Mr. Parker and, and Chief doing that. Obviously, one day after Veterans Day, couldn't be more fitting having Chief Alexander, who's retired from the National Guard, doing that, so thank you so much. Um, in that, um, we have public comments. Um, we do have one sign, it's Mr. Gary Smith about Pearson Allen Road. Is Mr. Smith here? Mr. Smith, if you'll, that microphone right there, Mr. Smith.
Good morning, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I live at 88 Lee Road, 498, which is in Lee County, but I drive through Russell County going shopping, going to see my daughter off of Oliver, Lake Oliver. So I, I go to this intersection almost daily. And it's a, it's a, I know an engineer's nightmare because the, the road, I gave you a diagram. The road that I'm, intersection I'm talking about is, is a, Allen Road is the one going north. It has a stop sign there. The Old Opalaka Road, which is a road going west, has no stop sign. Now, there's a stoplight off of, uh, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. There's a stop sign off the high, a stoplight off the highway, and you have traffic coming down Pierce Road, and the people either turn left onto Allen Road or stay on Old Opalaka Road. Do you follow me?
Yes, sir, we're following, we're watching, looking at your map, dude.
Oh, okay. What we need is a stop sign there on Old Opalaka Road to, I almost got rear-ended because I was at the stop sign on Allen Road, and I, I, when the light turned green, the traffic started moving, of course, and I pulled in. Well, there's a car coming, I think he sped up, you know, down Old Opalaka. It's, it's, they have to leave a gap because ninety percent of the traffic turns left there at Allen Road. See, so, so they need to leave a gap there. A stop sign would enable that, kind of, kind of, uh, enable that to, to, to happen. Because if, if the traffic coming on Old Opalaka blocks that, them from turning left, then you got a jam. See?
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Um, this intersection right here is, is in the middle of a study, and we're, we're working on that to, I mean, I, I'm trying to make it so it's less, uh, uh, you, you're less nervous. But there is issues there, and we're trying, we're doing a study now, trying to figure out ways. Now, if you're, if you'll know, just north of there, that intersection you're talking about, they've already done some work there to alleviate a problem.
Yeah, this Google Maps is wrong, and they, and they did good there.
So it's still, it's in the works, but I promise you, uh, when you, when you start talking about redesigning roads and intersections, it's not gonna be, uh, it won't be fixed next week. But, uh, they're doing the study and trying to figure out ways, and our engineer has talked to me, believe it or not, we talked about that intersection and another one real close nearby last week. So we're, we're on top of it, and the state's doing a study and, uh, just alleviate some of your concerns. Hopefully, in about three, four, five years, we'll have it all fixed.
All right, thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. And we, our engineer is here as well, so he heard your comments as well, so thank you so much. I believe that's all of the public comments. Did anyone miss signing in on the public comments this morning? We're here, all right, we'll move forward. As we get started, reminder to silence your cellphones if you can, so that we're not taking calls in the middle of the meeting, interrupting folks. We wanna say thanks to the, the obvious, uh, the ones that are here every time, our, um, department heads and, and those from the public. We're also Facebook Live, and those that can't make the meeting today are getting to watch it. But I wanna say a couple of special things. Um, one, yesterday was Veterans Day, and we, we honored that and showed support as a county out at the Veterans Memorial in Seal. We had a great crowd. But, um, if you are a veteran, if you will, please, will you please stand this morning so you can be recognized today?
A lot of folks already standing.
Very good. As, um, as, as we move past Veterans Day, we wanna continue to support our military. I know that this, this county supports our military, and we, we are really showing that more than we ever have. Um, and I know this, the seven commissioners up here one hundred percent support our military, not only current serving, but those that have served in the past as well. They make it a large part of our population in this county, so thank you for everything you've done for all of us. We also wanna recognize this morning the Glenwood 12th grade, um, government class with Ms. Griner. If y'all don't mind, will you please stand? Very good, all right. Thank y'all so much. Uh, they're here this morning observing, and anytime we can get our, um, our young folks in here to, to learn about, you know, in this case, county government, uh, you, future leaders of our, of our country. And we were, we're really proud to have you here this morning, so. All right, we're gonna move right into, um, starting, uh, we'll establish a quorum, and we'll do that by calling the roll. Ms. Wright?
District 3 Costello.
Here.
District 4 Reed.
Here.
District 1 Lee.
Present.
District 2 Chambers.
Here.
District 5 Darty.
Here.
District 7 Screws.
Here.
District 6 Corbin.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am, we have a quorum. We also have our attorney, Ms. Hope Hicks with us today. All right, we're gonna, um, commissioners, as you know, on Monday night, we approve the agenda at the work session. That will be the agenda we work off of today. First up, will be approval of the minutes for the October 22, 2025 Commission Meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Chambers, second by Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? That is approved. Next up, we'll move right into proclamations. Uh, we, the first one, we're gonna talk about, uh, the presentations to Employees of the Month and Service Awards. Ms. Wright?
Yes, sir. Good morning, commissioners. It's our favorite time of the month where we recognize our Employee of the Month as well as Service Awards to employees who have had many years of service with the county. This month, Employee of the Month is Mr. Ronnie Yancy in the Maintenance Department. Ronnie is an outstanding county employee that has a positive attitude and exceptional dedication. He is always the first to arrive in the mornings and the last to leave in the afternoons. He has been calling to work many times after hours on emergency and has never complained about it. Ronnie's experience in the HVAC field is invaluable to our maintenance team and the maintenance mission for service of excellence. This is why the Maintenance Director, Mr. Leon Watson, named Ronnie Yancy as the Employee of the Month for the month of November. Congratulations, Ronnie.
Just a little speech, Ronnie.
He's gotta get back to work, ain't he?
All right, now we recognize our employees for years of service. Celebrating five years of service, Mr. Ronnie Johnson, who's the Maintenance Supervisor for the jail. Five years of service, Mr. Brian Teis, the Chief Order and Official. Five years of service, Ms. Marsha Williams, Deputy Chief Clerk for Probate. Celebrating ten years of service, Ms. Samantha Cato, Deputy Director of EMA. And last, but certainly not least, Ms. Alice Chapman, Custodian for the Maintenance Department, ten years of service.
Thank you all, and, um, we really appreciate these employees for doing what they do for Russell County and for our citizens. We really appreciate that. Um, next up, we have a proclamation and presentation for Mr. Matthew Brown, who's served thirty years with Russell County. Ms. Wright?
Whereas the Russell County Commission recognizes Matthew Brown, Jr., Custodial Supervisor in the Maintenance Department for the Russell County Commission, retirement on November the first, twenty twenty-five, after thirty years of outstanding service to the employees and citizens of Russell County, Alabama. And whereas Matthew began his career with the Russell County Commission on October 23, nineteen ninety-five, as a custodial in the Commission Office. And whereas the recognition of diligent work and demonstrated ability, he was promoted to the position of Custodial Supervisor in the Maintenance Department. And whereas throughout his many years of service, Matthew has served the citizens of Russell County, Alabama with hard work and dedication. Therefore, be it proclaimed, we, the members of the Russell County Commission, do hereby extend to Matthew Brown, Jr., our sincere and grateful appreciation for dedicated service to the Russell County Commission and citizens of Russell County, Alabama. Our congratulations on his well-earned retirement, and our best wishes to him and his family for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Vice Chair, I motion that we accept the recommendation for the, uh, proclamation for Matthew Brown.
All right, I have a motion for acceptance of the proclamation. Do I have a second?
Second to motion.
I have a second by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Thank you, thank you, Matthew.
Matthew, thank you for everything for over the years. We really, I hope you enjoy your retirement.
I think he's just now fixing to go to work.
Yeah, that's usually what it is. All right, uh, next up, we have a proclamation for the 2025 Farm City Week in the Extension Office. Ms. Wright?
For seventy years, the American people have joined together during Thanksgiving Week to observe Farm City Week, a time to set aside to express gratitude for the bounty with which God has blessed our land. Throughout the week, Americans recognize the hard-working achievements of, of farmers, rural townsman, and city residents to make our nation's agricultural production distribution system so successful. This cooperation between rural and city dwellers for mutual benefit truly helps ensure our country's well-being. Now, therefore, we, the Russell County Commission, by virtue of authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim the week of November twenty-first through November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, as Alabama Farm City Week. I call upon all citizens in rural and cities alike to join in recognizing the accomplishments of our productive farmers and of our urban residents who cooperate to create abundant wealth and strength for our nation.
All right, commissioners, we have the proclamation read by the administrator. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Screws, second by Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? Um, I believe we have someone here to actually, uh, to actually receive that proclamation, so, um, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? I will go down and hand them.
That ain't for you, Chance.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not, neither. You got the last one. No, she's there for the commission office.
Uh, we're starting to thin out a little bit now, all these recognitions, and we're very appreciative of all. We really appreciate everything our Extension Office does, and Jennifer and her staff, that they do for Russell County. Um, very active, and if you don't believe it, just look at all the events they're having in classes and everything, so. All right, commissioners, we'll move into the agenda. The first, we, under discussion, we took care of all of the discussion items on Monday night. So we'll move right into business. The first one, awarding of the HVAC bid and asbestos removal bid. Mr. Leon Watson, our Maintenance Director.
Uh, good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, Maintenance is requesting, uh, move forward with the installation of our train controllers. Uh, and I'm requesting to award the bid to, uh, Train USA Inc. out of Alabama in the amount of a hundred and seven thousand, ninety-six dollars to install our HVAC controllers.
All right, you have the recommendation of Mr. Watson. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Chambers, second by Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? That is approved. Next will be the asbestos removal bid.
Uh, yes, uh, Commissioner, Maintenance is requesting to award the, um, the bid to W.T. Miller, uh, LLC out of Catala, Georgia, and the amount of this bid was forty thousand, five ninety-eight to remove the asbestos from the old library.
All right, you have a recommendation, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Reed, second by Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
Uh, Leon, will that asbestos removal take care of everything that we need as far as, uh, both floors, top and bottom?
Yes, it's, it's removing everything that the survey, uh, environment survey brought up that contained asbestos in it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? That is approved. Thank you, Leon. Next, we'll move to the purchase of a trencher, also, Leon.
Uh, yes, Maintenance is requesting, requesting to, uh, purchase, uh, some pre-budgeted, two pre-budgeted items. Uh, a trencher attachment for a skidster and a, um, uh, power rake attachment. Uh, the trencher attachment's ten thousand, two twenty-three ninety-one. The power rake is thirteen, nine, forty, eighty, for a total of twenty-four thousand, one sixty-four seventy-one. And this is a Sourcewell quote through Thompson Tractor, and it was pre-budgeted.
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lee, second by Commissioner Darty, and that will take care of the two items, trencher and power rake. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, both are approved, thank you, Leon.
Thank you.
Next up, commissioners, we have tourism, the Russell County High School Video Board, and advertising, promoting Russell County. Um, as I spoke on Monday night, this is something we've done the last couple of years, and I felt it would put that in the tourism budget, so I would like it this time, um, for a motion to approve twenty-five hundred dollars for that program for Russell County High School football.
Second to motion.
All right, motion by me, seconded by Commissioner Reed. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? That is approved, thank you. Next up, we have the, uh, cancellation of the November ninth work session. Ms. Wright?
Yes, sir, commissioners, when the twenty twenty-six meeting schedule was approved, one meeting conflict was missing from that list. Uh, the Commission meeting on November the eleventh, twenty twenty-six has been canceled because it would be Veterans Day. So it's my recommendation that the work session on November the ninth, twenty twenty-six also be canceled.
Motion to approve.
Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lee, second by Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? That is approved and canceled, thank you. Next up is the reappointment of the E-911 Board Member, I believe. Ms. Wright?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Reed, your appointment expires for the E-911 Board on November the twenty-fourth.
Yes, ma'am. Since Commissioner Reed's been doing an outstanding job, so I reappoint myself back to the board, thank you. I don't need no second.
All right, we don't, we don't, we don't actually have to take action on that, that's his appointment, so. All right, moving on. Under County Engineer, Highway Department, the first one is request to bid and advertise Walker Road.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Uh, I'm requesting the advertising bid. Uh, it's our next craft fund project, Walker Road. It's from Alabama Highway twenty-six to North Uche Road, six point oh five eight miles. Uh, we would advertise on eleven twenty-six, twelve three, and twelve ten. Open bids here at the Commission Chambers on twelve seventeen at two thirty, and then award bids at the, uh, Commission Meeting in- at 2:30, and then award bids at the Commission Meeting in January 1/14 or 26.
Motion to approve. Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Screws, seconded by Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? I think we'll all be glad to see Walker Road. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Very good. Next one is the corrective asphalt materials. Sean?
Yes, sir. I'm requesting to go into contract with corrective asphalt materials for a CRF project on Price and Allen Road. I know we just talked about that study done, but this is in preparation in the next couple of years of paving it that you're just going to seal all the cracks, and we'll restripe it once we get that done. But it's in the amount of $26,752.
All right, you have a recommendation?
Motion to... Second.
Motion by Commissioner Screws, seconded by Commissioner Costello. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, that is approved. Thank you. Next up is the last one, the Dynamic Infrastructure Contract. Sean?
Yes, sir. Asking for the Commission Chair to sign the contract for... With Dynamic Infrastructure Contract. It is an AI program software that helps us grade our bridges. I know it was discussed Monday night a lot, but it's just new technology out there that will help us enhance our bridge inspections, and they have coordinated with the state to grade all the grades and all in the state program. So, this will be in the amount of $15,500 for a three-year contract.
Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Screws, seconded by Commissioner Darty. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed?
I do got one announcement I want to make. We've had minor damages to the bridge on Sanford Road. We had a edge plate come up and it's chipped some of the concrete surface. It's no structural damage, just rideability stuff. We're going to be requesting to close that bridge from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Wednesday, November 19, so we can do the repairs. We've got to put some compound on it, seal it, and it takes about four hours to cure. So, we're going to have detour signs and everything up, and I will get in touch with Mr. Martin, the EMA Director, and get all any routes that need to be rerouted done. So, just letting that known to the public. So, it'll be on November 19 from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Very good. Thank you for that. That'll be a pretty good disruption there for a little while for a lot of people. Also, Sean, when you put down Richardson Road and Brown Road, we had the stop signs got some damage. So, you got that one a few minutes ago. All right. Thank you. Move on to sanitation. The first one is the... Or the only one is the uniform contract. Randy Smith?
Yes, good morning, Commissioner Chair. This morning, I'm seeking approval for revised uniform contract. It has been reviewed by the Administrator and the County Attorney, and that's to you.
Motion to approve. Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Costello, seconded by Commissioner Darty. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, Randy, I'll get that signed after the meeting. All right. Mad Administrator, do you have anything else? Okay, very good. We'll move on to the attorneys portion. Ms. Hicks, I know you have one.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. The Commission Office received a notice of claim regarding an automobile accident. This was... Notice of claim was filed by Erickson Thomas as the father of his son. His son was apparently riding on a Russell County Board of Education school bus when the school bus was involved in an accident, and he's filed a notice of claim with the Commission. Typically, notice of claims are simply allowed to just expire, which then they're deemed denied. But I would recommend in this one that there be a motion to deny the notice of claim, and then I'll send a letter letting them know that the claim has been denied because the Board of Education is not under the Russell County Commission. It's a separate legal entity.
Motion to approve. Second to motion.
Motion by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Darty. Any other questions to the Attorney? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, that is it. Mad Attorney, you have anything else for us this morning?
No, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, under Commissioners' discussion, is there anything that needs to be brought to the table today that wasn't on the agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Lee?
Yes. At this time, as we know, Mr. Kenneth Fundenberg passed away, and he was longtime County Attorney plus County Attorney in the county and the county attorney. And he was a well-established author and artist and one of the last of the community... Old-time community leaders that we all grew up with, and I think we need to start the process of having a proclamation for Mr. Fundenberg and his family. Just put it on your radar.
Absolutely agree. In fact, I'm glad you brought that up. I was actually going to bring the same thing up. You know, obviously, Mr. Fundenberg did a lot of good work in the community and then did some good work with the county as well. So, we'll make sure we get that ready and get it going. Thank you for bringing that up.
It may take a volume of papers to put it on...
Yeah. There you go.
Yeah, there's definitely not very many men that had as many irons and fires and was as accomplished as he was in many, many different things.
You know, I even found out later in life, the property my parents owned that I grew up on, he sold to them. So, I mean, he's got a lot of tentacles out there, for sure. So, very good. Thank you for bringing that up. Again, Commissioners, yesterday, Veterans Day, we had a very good crowd at the Russell County Veterans Memorial in Seal. Very proud to have that event and continue to have that event and show them. We unveiled the POW MIA Monument, which really is a class act. It really looks nice and something that we should all be proud of. So, just wanted to mention that as well. Any other items that we need to bring today? We'll talk about them in announcements, but we have a lot going on for Christmas coming up, all these lightings. Hope we get to see every one of you there when we get to that point. So, under announcements, the first one is the Thanksgiving Day Holiday Closing. All county buildings will be closed on Thursday and Friday, which are November 27 and 28 for holidays. The sanitation holiday schedule, they will be closed on Thanksgiving Thursday, but they will pick up the Thursday garbage on Friday. So, they will be... But the office will be closed. So, the only thing that will be running will be the crews, the dedicated crews out there, making sure all of your holiday garbage gets taken away from your home. So, can't thank them enough for that as well. We have the Bi-City Christmas Parade, which starts in Phoenix City, ends in Columbus, which will be Saturday, December 6. It starts at 10:00 a.m. Anywhere about the courthouse on, you'll be able to see that parade. Hopefully, you're able to come to attend that. I know we'll have some of our departments under the Sheriff's Office will be in there, the Mobile Command and others. Under the Christmas lighting events that I mentioned, the first one kicks off in Crawford on Tuesday, December 2, which is the first Tuesday after Thanksgiving. It says 6:00 p.m. We're thinking it's going to get dark around 6:30 to light. Music will actually start a little earlier than that, probably around 5:30 or so. So, we hope everybody comes. We have not had a problem with that in the past, to the point we have completely shut Crawford down from traffic. We will have a big presence of the Sheriff's Office there, making sure that traffic, controlling people crossing the roads. But we have thousands of people that show up for that event. We're very proud to have that in Crawford.
Lenders.
Yep. We will have a few food trucks there as well, just because we've had a lot of feedback from people saying they want something to eat while they're there. As far as the committee, we actually provide hot chocolate for everyone, and there will be some other little things as well. So, we think it's going to be a really good event. Then, two days later, we will be Thursday night at Ladonia Sports Complex at the Pavilion. That one also says 6:00 p.m. Scott, does that start earlier than that, or about 6?
You know, we're going to wait and see what daylight does.
Yeah. So, we see it getting dark about 6:30 now. So, around 6:00 p.m. at Ladonia on Thursday, December 4. That one will also be a tree lighting and lighting of the lights around the walking trail. Then, on... This one's a little change. It used to be on Friday. This year, it's going to be on Saturday, which is December 6, at the old Russell County Courthouse in Seal. That one actually starts at 4... Or it actually says 6:00 p.m. again. Again, most of these are going to start up a little earlier than that. And that one will be a lot of different things like hot dogs and hot chocolate and things like that ahead of the lighting when it gets dark around 6:30 at the old Russell County Courthouse. The Fort Mitchell Tree Lighting will be on Sunday, which is also a change this year, Sunday, December 7, at the Fort Mitchell Community Center on Highway 165, which is next to the Fort Mitchell Fire Department where our playground is. This is turning into a very good event as well. That one is from 4 to 8, and they will light the lights as it gets dark as well. Wrapping down to the Hertzboro... Hertzboro Tree Lightning Ceremony, this one is 6:00 p.m. Central Time. That one, I would get there a little early, too, because it's going to be pretty dark at 6:00 p.m. Central Time. But that's the time they've given us, and that's on Friday, December 12. So, that's the next Friday after the other events. Then, the Hertzboro Christmas Parade is on Saturday, December 13, the next morning, and that starts at 10:00 a.m. Central Time. Again, make notes of that. Any other announcements that we missed? All right, I don't believe we have anything else. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, we are adjourned.